Thanks for joining us again for Truth No Chaser. Today, we're going to have the DeKalb County Schools Chief of Staff Elijah Palmer with us. What he's going to talk about is we've heard about the Department of Education being dismantled on the federal level. How does that play out to our local school systems? What does that mean for funding? Not only was it mean for funding as far as who gets funded and what funding gets to get channeled through the school system, but how are the school systems actually going to receive that funding? And then disperse it. I also want to talk about Trump's initiatives with attempting to control the curriculum. Is there a real fear with that? And how is that being managed? And then finally, we're going to talk a little bit more about how we're going to be moving forward with our school systems, funding wise, and making sure marginalized children aren't left out. It's going to be a great show. It is to educate you parents and staff members and faculty on what's actually going to be happening with your school systems going forward. But first, make sure you subscribe. If you're watching this on youtube.com/the-truth-no-chaser, which is the video version of our podcast, please make sure you subscribe. And if you want to listen to the audio version of this podcast, please listen to it wherever you can find your favorite podcasts. And when you do, there's going to be a link there that says support the show. Make sure you click on it so that we can continue to bring you quality content, great production and guests to help make our black lives better.
No Chaser.
So with Trump in office, there are so many changes going on, you guys. And the biggest one is the Board of Education dismantling it. What are the effects, Mr. Palmer?
Great question, Ashley. When thinking about dismantling the US Department of Education, a lot of questions arise instantly. First, you have to start with funding. What's going to happen to funding? Obviously, we know it's going to shift to the state level where the Georgia Department of Education will be responsible for one overseeing policy. The allocation of title funding, which is obviously where the majority of low income schools benefit from. So I think a lot of school districts are really trying to see what's going to happen with the title funding. And if it shifts to the state level, how those funds are going to be distributed? And who's going to be able to oversee the regulations? When you talk about the different standards that's happening across education and ensuring that each grade levels are meeting these marks at the end of the year. When you talk about the different curriculum that's happening in all the schools, I believe we just shifted to a new math curriculum and the professional development that happens behind all of that. So the Georgia, Georgia, Godot is going to be responsible for overseeing all of that. And I think it's going to be a heavy load on the state levels. And I think that presents a lot of inequities too. Because if title is going to be reduced, reduced, reduced or just taken away altogether, then there's going to be communities without marginalized families who will not have the funding to be able to have that tutoring before and after school, special programs, you know, so they can just have that advantage and that edge, some of the things that that title funding addresses. So it's, 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 it's good and bad, but I think a lot of families will struggle. A lot of marginalized communities will struggle because I think to some degree, funding is going to be reduced.
So you say, you saying after school programs like, like?
Yeah, so there's after school programs. You know, a lot of families from, from, from title schools, you have, you have families that's working and they can't get to their school. Elementary school, I think we dismiss around two fifteen, two twenty.
Yeah.
So that's aftercare services that goes to six thirty PM. And a lot of that funding is, is paid for through title funding. So families will be impacted by that.
So that's, that's, that's considered extracurricular, obviously. So like any, any, so basically in a nutshell, what you're saying, any of those extracurricular activities, not educationally, not, not including sports or
Correct.
anything like that, but just say, wow, so all those like
So parents that work late and like their kids are at the school programs?
Yeah, it's a possibility. So if those funds are decreased, then, then either the school district or the schools will have the autonomy to decide which programs are going to be a priority. So some, so it's not necessarily saying that it's instantly going to be dismantled on the school level, but, but it'll, it'll be schools to have that autonomy to make that decision on if we want to prioritize that. So and I'm, I'm hoping in DeKalb County, we're definitely going to, we're going to do everything in our power to ensure that their families have that after, aftercare support that they rely on.
Because I mean, just not, not necessarily, that's one
Right.
portion of it, like, you know, I guess parents having that extra timing, you know, because you guys know how Atlanta traffic is. You understand what I'm saying? So if you, you know, you don't want your, your child home alone, you know, for umpteen hours by themselves, you know, and, and, and you know, the more they are, they can get into stuff. So you want them in a secure place where it's, where it's safer, it's supposed to be safer than school, you know? So not just the timing,
Right.
but also I don't, I don't know kids that if it wasn't for that extra tutelage, you know, the extra, excuse me, the tutoring and just, you know, those kids that kind of need that extra, you know,
Extra care.
push, care mentally, you know, because they need a smaller setting, whether it be resource or, you know, so like I, I would like, for one, I would hate to see any dismantling when it came to that, you know, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's tough. I, you know, I, yeah, it's, it's important that people.
So I think that you revealed a few different layers to it. And we certainly wanted, the ethics of it is one thing that a lot of people are talking about.
Correct.
You know, marginalized communities not getting access to resources that they need to basically have those advantages to catch up. But the process is, you know, because the, the so the right wingers who are, who are, and we know we're not going to put you in a position to speak politically.
Of course.
But we do know what party is pushing this, right? So the right wingers, what they tried to do is say those who are opposing it are driving a fear campaign. This is not really going to happen. They're pumping this fear that it's not really going to happen. But when we look at our demographics and who's running what, they don't really understand, you touched on something so key. So those funds will be released federally.
Correct.
To the district or to the state?
To the state. They'll, they'll, yeah, they'll go to the state.
And then the state gets to decide how they're distributed.
That's, that's it. That's it. Absolutely. And to be honest, in Georgia, if it were to go that route, then I'm feeling confident. Because Governor Kemp, he does a lot, to be honest, to provide as far as CTAE in, in our district in, in Georgia period. He's, he's provided a lot of funding for safety and security at schools. When you talk about early literacy campaign, there's a lot of Senate bills and House bills that's been passed here in Georgia. Like they're not compared to anywhere in the country. I said, Georgia, every year, they're putting the emphasis on passing a lot of House bills that really support schools around literacy and safety and security. So if it shifts to the state level, I'm confident because Governor Kemp has shown that, you know, he's in support of a lot of things that we're doing on the, on the school level here in Georgia.
That's good to hear.
That is good to hear. But now here's the thing.
What schools?
Right. Here's the thing though.
What counties?
Governor Kemp running up on an election year.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And, and he may or may not always hold, hold the belt to be able to make that choice.
Now, one thing that I am relieved of though, right, is Jordan, Georgia has shown its ability to flip.
Correct.
So that, that executive seat is one that, you know, just because someone, we learned that just because someone wins an election, doesn't mean that they get to be president of those people that voted for them. You gotta be president of everything. Same thing on the state, on the state level, you gotta govern over everyone. So this is a, this is a state where they still, that executive branch has to remain somewhat loyal to all of his people. So I feel where you're saying where that hope is, I guess even if Governor Kemp is replaced, thank God it's not up to, not up to the Georgia Assembly. Now, does this, for listeners who may be listening somewhere everywhere else, does this pretty much the layout for all states? Did it, the executive branch of each state government will kind of make the choices of how those ones are dispersed?
Yeah, from what I heard, it's going to shift to the state level and everybody, every state will have their own autonomy of deciding, you know, what's, what they're going to prioritize. And I didn't really hint on how students with disability, you know, can potentially be impacted. Cause when we talk about title fundings and a lot of the guidance and the, say, I think IDEA for our Individualized Disabilities Educational Act, where we get that support for students with disability, that comes on the federal level. And we've been receiving guidance, you know, for years. So I'm, I'm optimistic to what that's going to look like on the state level to ensure that those students going to continue to receive their services that they get. So students with IEPs, McKinney Ventow Act, so students that's registered under homelessness, you know? So I worry about those two things, those two areas when you talk about students with IEPs and, and the Homeless Act as it shifts to the state level. Because that's a, it's a whole lot for them to kind of oversee. And I think different communities, they're going to lose out. Because if you can, if you don't have that ability to advocate for yourself, if you don't, if you, you're not attending these legislative meetings and you're taking, you're pushing legislators. Because I think here in Georgia, where I had to really educate myself on pushing things through legislation, you know? So that was, that was the biggest, biggest thing when I compare my experiences here to Illinois, you have to, you have to be able to educate yourself on, on that. And I'm hopeful that, you know, communities, I keep speaking on marginalized communities. And, you know, I know there are some terms that they want us to shy away from, but the work that I do, you know, I'm, I'm going to continue to, to, to speak out and advocate for them.
Five oh four plans wouldn't be, wouldn't be included in here.
And it's, and it's, it's similar. It's not necessarily disability, but it's just an added level of support, you know, for students, so.
So talk, talk to us a little bit. Talk to us a little bit about what these things fund. So like when you say children with IEPs, is the funding the staff that supports them? What, what part of the budget does, does this actually take care of these funds?
So there's, there's a couple of layers. There's, there's funding for staffing. When you talk about students with IEPs, a lot of, that means that the classrooms are smaller. You're going to need more paraprofessionals who's able to add that one-on-one support within the classroom. There's different programming that, that's provided for those students with IEPs. And then there's parent engagement. You know, schools have to be able to provide their support to be able to educate the parents so that it's like a bridge. So the, the tools that we're using in the school needs to be, you know, reciprocated at home. So there, there's a lot that comes with that. So it starts with personnel and then there's a lot of programming that support our students with IEPs, ensuring that they have their social emotional needs. Because we always say that before you can worry about numeracy and literacy, their social emotional needs needs to be meet, needs to be met, you know? And I think here in DeKalb, I feel like we do a great job with doing that. There's a division, we have a division of student services where, you know, it's about students with IEPs is one department. Gifted and talented is another, and then our early childhood. I didn't talk about our early childcare that, that happens for our, you can be three years old and, or four years old, pre K three, pre K four. Georgia, actually, DeKalb County has the most early learning classrooms in the state of Georgia. So when you talk about being exposed to literacy when you're three and four, so before you get to pre K and kindergarten, you're already on track. And ironically, a lot of black families going to pre K or kindergarten, not having that experience. So they're already two or three steps behind.
So another obvious question while we're on this subject matter of it is, are they ready at the district level? Like administratively, are they ready to process, receive and disperse these funds? Or is it going to be a scramble at the beginning of the year?
Well, we're ready, especially, I can speak for DeKalb County. I think as a district, if you're not being proactive with implementing strategies, implementing systems right now so that, you know, you're prepared for when it happens. Because I mean, we anticipated, you know, things to kind of move, but not as quickly as they did. When the new administration came in, executive orders were being passed within days, the day of, I mean, to be honest. So we have weekly meetings just saying, hey, you know, what ifs, what ifs? You know, these are going to be our responses. Obviously, I can't speak on everything that happened in these meetings, but we're going to be, we're going to be ready either way it goes. And we, we do a great job, I feel like, with our funding, with our fund balance in the district. We operate on a two, two point six billion dollar budget. And we have a, we had a great chief financial officer who has a nice hefty fund balance because we don't know what may happen in the future. So we don't want to be caught off guard. So when I said we're being proactive in our approach, we're going to ensure that our students don't leave, lose out on the educational experiences, especially if it's in our control.
That's refreshing for those who are in that school district that, that really takes those steps.
Yeah, absolutely. Especially, you know, I, I have a paraprofessional background, so some of our friends that I still keep in contact with, they are scared. Out their mind, everybody's kind of like,
Yeah, yeah.
Where do I, where do I go now, so to speak, so? Yeah.
Well, we talked about the expected changes for the students as well as administration, the losses through funding. Direct impact of Trump's initiatives as far as the controls on the current curriculum. How will that change and how will that be affected?
Well, when you think about our current curriculum, I think the biggest thing, the biggest changes is ensuring that DEI, DEI and the language around that isn't really impacting, you know, the instruction. Because the, the takeaway from that is if they were to investigate and there's DEI being taught and if there's anything surrounding DEI, then it can potentially impact funding. So you got, you got districts that's willing to, you know, stay the course and take their chances. And as I continue to say, equity inclusion are words that, that they're looking for. But in DeKalb, it's about access and opportunity for all. So we're going to continue to give access and opportunity. We're going to continue to ensure that our curriculum is, is, is in align with our standards so that our students are ready for the Georgia milestones, the, our state assessments, and then they're going to be ready for the national assessments with our, with our map testing. So we're pushing the needle. We're going to ensure that we're still providing these opportunities to give open more classrooms for our pre K three and our pre K four early learning classrooms. Because it, it starts there. If we're able to get our kids in the classroom at three and four, and I say that when they get to kindergarten, they're going to be set up for success.
That's good.
So with several companies moving away from or shying from DEI, you guys said you move on, you said access opportunity.
Access and opportunity.
So therefore, nothing's going to change as far as that hiring process with your county.
So absolutely not. The hiring process is ours. Representation matters. When you talk about a school district of ninety-two thousand in DeKalb County where fifty-eight percent represent black or African American, twenty-one percent identify as Hispanic or Latinx, eleven percent white, and then, and then the eight, the nine are going to be Asian or others. We're going to continue to make sure that representation is throughout the school district. We're going to see it in our schools with our administrative staff, our teachers, and you send it on the, the cabinet level where we have our super, our excellent superintendent, Dr. Devon Horton. And I have the pleasure of serving as his chief of staff. And I had the pleasure of visiting all one hundred and thirty-nine of our schools over the past year and a half, just ensuring that, you know, we're boots on the ground, moving this work. We're not just sitting in our office under the air conditioning, you know, just giving out orders. No, we're, we're, we want to hear about lived experiences. We want to hear about the great things that's happening in the schools. And we want to hear about ways in which we can make experiences better. Because I don't believe in just, you know, having that authoritative leadership style when I'm just giving orders. I want to hear from leaders that's out there leading this work on the school level and, and hear about what, what type of resources the teachers needs. So we're going to continue to do that. And I'm, I'm excited about the future of DeKalb County. And our enrollment is increasing for a reason. You know, we've, we've had our enrollment increase by about five hundred from last school year to now with, with the addition of elementary school athletics, elementary athletics from K, K through, our K through fifth schools. We had, we've added something I didn't really touch on, you know, our teacher retention is an issue across the country. One of the things we're doing at DeKalb, we have our Ignite Teacher Residence where the motto FUBU, we're building them for us, by us. So if, if you have a bachelor's degree and you majored in, say, you, you were, you're a banker or you're doing something in IT and you, and you're making a decision that I don't want to do it anymore, I want to teach. Well, we're partnering with, we partnered with Georgia State for our first cohort, I believe, and I believe the last one was Clayton State. Where you come in for one year, you'll receive a thirty thousand dollar living stipend where you don't have to work if you don't want to, just for you to get by. You're going to receive a master's degree. You're going to partner with a veteran teacher where you'll be in the classroom Monday through Thursday on the job from day one. And then Fridays, you'll be in the classroom learning, you know, the, the curriculum. And in one year, you'll graduate with a master's degree and you'll be ready to teach the following year where you'll, you'll start out making anywhere from sixty-two to sixty-five thousand dollars a year. So
Wow.
Every, every year, we're, we're building the pipeline where we're having fifty teachers coming from each cohort. So right now, we, we're about to launch our third cohort in June. So this is just one of the innovative ways that we're attracting teachers into DeKalb and we're, we're trying to retain them through this process.
You do that up at the district office, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. I attended one, shout out to Artel Chaney from Grand Canyon University.
Okay.
She's one of your recruits that come, she'd be on you, she'd call you more than the bill collector. You know, so, you know, she should definitely be doing her job, for real, for real, for real. So I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, so Frankie, as he said earlier, he used to be in the, in the school system. And he had a great question about, he was curious about other staff and social climate. So Frankie, ask your amazing question, please.
Yeah, so it, it revolves around people that, that, you know, their motivation, you know? People that have, you know, spent umpteen years getting, you know, continuing education, obtaining their degrees, becoming teachers. But now with the lack of confidence that, you know, maybe the board they have or, or the direction that, you know, the government is going right now in the climate, a lot of people are kind of jumping ships and finding different careers. And I just wanted to like you to touch on that real quick, just like the impact of staffing due to the social climate.
Absolutely. So when I think about the impact of staff and due to the social climate and, and the number of, of staff who are leaving the field after thirteen, fourteen years, you know, as, as a chief of staff of a school district, you know, it's sad to see, especially from my purview, because I want to do everything I can to keep, keep them here. And, and think about just starting over a career when you know you've, you've built this 401K and, and your pension status. And, and I know you, you're vested in Georgia after ten years. So a lot of people think that, hey, at the end of the day, you know, I'm, I'm going to receive mine regardless. But the objective is to keep them here. And I think that's one of the things, since I've been here for the almost two years now, July seventeenth to make two years, where there's pipelines all over. I spoke about our teacher residency program that we have. We also have a pair to teacher pipeline where it's like, we don't, we don't want our pairs just to stay pairs. Like you can come and partner with us and you can get your bachelor's degree paid for and you can become a certified teacher in two years. There's a pipeline, I oversee public safety. A lot of, one of the things that, you know, stood out to me coming to Georgia is we have our own public safety, a police department within our school district. And that falls under my division as the chief of staff. So now we have a pipeline where campus supervisors who serve as security officers in the school, there's, there's an opportunity for them to go to the police academy and become, you know, police officers in six months. So there's areas of growth for everyone. And I think that's, when you talk about retention and retaining our high quality staff, there has to be ways for, for you, for you to elevate. You know, I come from the non-teaching ranks where I was a professional athlete from two thousand and four to two thousand and eleven. And I came home to Chicago when I retired in two thousand and eleven and didn't know where I wanted to go into. And I just stepped foot in education. You know, I listened to a mentor, took a risk and, and I climbed up the ranks. And, and fifteen years later, I sit here as the chief of staff. So I know how my route, you know, how it happened and how I'm grateful and thankful for that. So that's one of the things I've added to DeKalb County where I want to ensure that there's going to be room for growth in, in all departments.
Absolutely. That's what's up, man.
Yeah.
That's good. They need that encouragement because, you know, you know, I don't want to say such an easy decision, right? You know what I'm saying? Like, and, and be like, oh, why, why throw your career away, you know? But to his point, why throw your career away? Like, you know, when you, and, and of course, starting over, it ain't easy.
It ain't easy.
You know, and a whole nother like field too, you know, I, I know a former teacher that's a cop now, you know what I'm saying? So now he has to do twenty years or something like that in that, you know, field, you know? And, and you literally were a teacher for close to fifteen years. I don't, so you know, I, yeah, yeah, definitely. I, I love to hear the, the motivation that you guys are spewing to, to kind of keep everybody afloat, give them some kind of hope. You know, and, and look at it optimistically like, hey, listen, this is, we not, we not working, you know, around the clock for nothing. This is, this is for, for y'all to say, and I, and I love the, the fact that y'all, your focus is us.
Absolutely.
You understand, so?
For sure. The work is going to continue to happen. Like I said, you can change the words that we use, but like I'm going to continue to say, access and opportunity for our students. So that's, that's, that's the message. And I love, I love that.
Yeah, I love it too.
I love that a lot.
Because that's a, that's a, that's a, what we lack.
Right.
You know, the
Opportunity.
Both, both. Access and, and opportunity, that is major. I hope that doesn't go over people's heads.
Absolutely.
When they hear this.
Yeah, especially for DeKalb County, because just to, you know, when I first moved to Georgia and I moved to DeKalb County, I kept saying, don't have kids in DeKalb County because school system sucks with their. So I was like, dang, I don't want to have kids here. So yeah, it's always
Cabin APS, cabin APS. And that, that's so you just hear the, the worst. You hear all the horror stories coming from this county.
So it's great that y'all are doing so much good work in here. So you said you came from Illinois. So what's the difference in comparison from where you were in Illinois School District? You know, just being honest, you ain't got to talk too much about if you don't want to, to now where you are in Georgia in DeKalb County.
Absolutely.
I said, that's home, so you don't want to do too bad.
So in Illinois and the school systems that I've worked in, in Chicago Public Schools for nine years, and then I was in North, North Chicago, Northeast Chicago, it was in a school district, Everston, Skokie for three years. But in Illinois, we, we, I think even in, in Georgia, they'll say that we, we moved pretty fast. When we, when we came in and we presented our ninety day plan, we did our homework on DeKalb. And, and I'm grateful that, you know, all of these barriers and, and these obstacles were being presented here in DeKalb because the job wouldn't have been available for us to come and take it on. And we, we took it on knowing the challenges. What I can speak on is we love serving our kids, kids that look like us. You know, when the fifty-eight percent of a ninety-two thousand dollar school, ninety-two thousand student school district stood out to us. So, but we, we knew that we needed to really move the work. But it was important, like when you come into a district, a lot of people want to see the things that's, that's going bad, needs to be changed and make instant change. We don't do that. We believe in, you got to have a change management process. So I think we're able to get that buy-in from, from those who, who from Georgia or who've been here for the past fifteen to twenty-five years to say that, hey, it may seem like we're moving fast in the beginning, but it's really about understanding the processes of what's happening. I'm looking at the scores, I'm seeing the graduation rate sit at seventy-six percent. And no, that's not great. It's not great at all. I'm seeing the suspension data, y'all suspending kids twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand a year. Like we're looking at all of this data, but then you have to really analyze, are you analyzing the data? So getting them to buy in here in Georgia, because we move so fast, Illinois, when we see a problem, we, 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 we understand it and then we address it because we work with sense of urgency. Because bottom line, if you don't produce in Illinois, you get fired. And in Georgia, to some degree, we see sense of comfort where it's like, you know, we'll get there in due time. But with us, it's not about in due time because we got students that's relying on us right now. And it's not, it's not, our seniors need our help right now. It's not about our kids that's in middle and elementary school. It's like, let's make things happen right now. So I would just say that, that sense of urgency. And then, and then the work around access and opportunity started for us around eight to ten years ago in Illinois. So we were, we're ahead. So when we came to Georgia, we had to slow down and then really, you know, educate, build them up. And now we're able to move that needle around access and opportunity.
Good, good.
Oh, that's good.
The school, the school, what did you, what was your position up in Chicago?
So I started out as the dean of students, which is the disciplinarian of a high school. So I went from dean of students to being the culture and climate coordinator, where now I had a team that undermined and I kind of supervised them. I went, then I left there and I was the director of culture and climate at the school, school district in Everston, Skokie, District sixty-five, where there was eighteen schools. So I supervised principals who put systems and structures in place to ensure that, you know, that, that their culture and climate was in order. And then I came here in year thirteen as the chief of staff with my superintendent.
How could you compare the youth, the youth in Chicago? You know, be just, be just being honest, like, but, but, because that was, you said twenty-eleven?
So yeah, yeah, twenty-eleven. Yeah. Yeah, twenty-eleven when I retired from playing pro ball and then I went into, I was at a high school too. So I did a high school in Chicago. And it was the second worst high school academically and behaviorally according to the discipline data and academic data. So number one was a school in East St. Louis, Illinois. And we were number, we were number one in Chicago. But our kids were really about their life in Chicago. Where it's like, listen, I'm coming to school because if I don't come, I'm going to get shot today. So I'm just here to kill time and then I'm going to meet up with the guy. So I, I, I've had to go to court and, and say, yeah, this is my student and testify, not knowing that I was going there to advocate for someone that, that just murdered, you know, a, a, an adult last week. So like I see the kids here in Georgia and I was like, oh my God, these kids will get bullied if they were in my high school that I worked in Chicago. oh my God, these kids will get bullied if they were in my high school that I worked in Chicago. Cause you know, like, they, 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 they mimic what they see on TV. You know, but it's like, like the rappers, G Herbo, Polo G, those are all guys that came through my school that I seen on the regular who had, you know, ten to twelve guys waiting for them at the school, where you knew what they were getting into. And here it's like, you guys just got dropped off in the school bus. So why is your pants sagging and why are you walking around throwing up gang signs? Like, you can't ride the school bus or the public transportation back home if you about that life. So.
You know, that's, that's such a tough man. That's the dark side, right? Because like you said, he had to testify.
Right.
Then you have, you know, I, I've, I've been to Kelly's office, you know, when I worked with him and three funeral programs on his, you know what I'm saying, on his desk of.
He knows Brian.
Brian, Brian Kelly, yeah. Been, been to his office and, you know, and he got three, uh, uh, funeral programs, you know, on his, students that he had to speak at their funeral and stuff like that. That's the, that's the tough part. That's the eerie part right there that you just don't wanna, you know, but thankfully, and that, and that wasn't, that wasn't to call him soft, what you just said.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
But, but, but there's a, there's a cultural change. It's a, this, there's a, a, a area that you could tap into.
Absolutely.
Where that you can, you can be able to reach them and, and, and hopefully help them see the difference, the reality versus the fantasy that you guys glorify so much. You understand what I'm saying? So, but, but back in twenty-eleven, you're right.
Yes.
Back in twenty-eleven, that probably, probably wasn't like that. You know what I'm saying? I, I, I worked in the school system in Queens in twenty-eleven.
Okay.
So I, I definitely understand what you mean. Like, you know, when people, when people are really about that life.
Yeah.
You know, and it was probably way worse than that when we were younger and stuff like that, you know. But over time, you know, shout out to y'all in DeKalb that's really doing.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Appreciate it. I appreciate that.
Yeah, for real.
Cause they were always getting so much negative press.
I know. When I, when I told Ashley I was taking a job here, she was like, what? What? The cap? Oh, no. Oh, no. And I was like, hey, hey, yeah, I'm coming. I'm coming to Georgia.
County's one of the worst.
Don't do it.
Yeah. So that is good that y'all are making so many changes though. And I'm, I'm proud of you. So that's what's up. Is there any things that you want to ask before we ask them?
No, he, uh, he covered a lot. Um, and really a lot of enlightening things. I'm glad to hear that, um, DeKalb County was so prepared to, to, for the changes, um, which lets me know that there's a standard that other school systems have to meet to be able to make sure they're, you know, all political notions aside, to make sure you're delivering for your children. And God, I'm, I'm gonna steal that phrase that everybody needs to adopt that access and opportunity. For two reasons. Number one is, is, is true. It's a value to hold. It's a tru- it's a value to truly hold to. But then three, you know, it's that way around that, the whole DEI, we gonna do it anyway.
That's it.
But we gonna call this, which to me, it's like, it's even greater impact, the two words.
That's it.
So.
Yeah. And as a cabinet team, there were a lot of words that we voted on, but the, those two right there, myself and the superintendent, like, no, there's nowhere around it. We gonna, we gonna capture this and everything, all our language around the equity, inclusion. We're gonna be centered around access and opportunity for everyone.
For everyone.
For everyone, the air, the air quotes.
I dig it, I dig it.
Right. Before we wrap this up, Elijah, anything else that you want us to know or people should know about dismantling the board education or the things taking place in DeKalb County or Georgia in general?
Well, first off, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come and speak today. Uh, Ashley, Jay and Frankie, you know, it's very enlightening to be able to share our story for, especially DeKalb County, you know. And I, when I speak about being proactive with, you know, how are we gonna support our scholars? That's where, that's really what we're about. You see my head, it's, it's, it says H Pride and that's our six core values of DeKalb County. Being humanizing in our approach, understanding that we gotta approach everyone as human beings first before we can really get into the work. Just being professional in everything that we do. As I spoke about being boots on the ground, going into the school, all thirty, one thirty-nine to hear about the experiences and, and ways in which I can make, make it better. Just being respectful in how I'm communicating to staff and parents, understanding that they're coming with a lot of challenges, a lot of precipitating factors, things that's happening in their, in their lives that we can't see that's impacting their behavior. So even if they, you know, go from zero to ten, I gotta understand it as a professional that, you know, it's not personal. Uh, just having that integrity and that dignity to adjust, address this work and be able to advocate, advocate for our most marginalized communities, as I continue to say. And then having that empathy to be able to put myself in the shoes of those that we're serving. So I lead by that. I stand by it. So I think when you speak about DeKalb County, you'll, you'll hear H Pride is gonna stand out because it's what we do. And once again, if, if, if the dismantling of education is the route that they decide to go, you know, those who, who, who are just sitting back and waiting to, to react, educate yourself, get out here and, uh, advocate for these legislators to be passed, you know, to, to, to support our scholars through this process. So thank you again.
Yeah, no doubt.
Thank you, thank you. Broad information.
Thank, thank you for your passion. Not only your excellence and professionalism, but the passion that drives it in what can be an unrewarding profession at times, especially in the public eye. So I personally thank you for what wakes you up every day and drives you to do, do what you do well.
Thank you all again.
That's it?
That's it. Lot to chew on. And I ain't even got kids.
Good way to end that, man.
Yes, yes. Until next time, keep walking your truth, black people.